All right, we'll call this meeting to an end. The Select Board Meeting for November 6th, 2019. And we can jump right into our consent agenda. We have some words to approve to serve our meeting tonight. AP-2016, AP-2016-2, AP-2016-S, AP-2017, AP-2017-S, AP-2018, AP-2018-S, PR-2009, AP-2019-V, and PR-2010. We also have a Shala APR, Reauthorization of the sign, Conservation Resolution, Coalholders Agreement, and that need free re-sign as one of the legal entities to change from an individual to an LLC. And this was previously approved by the Town Meeting Select Board in a Conservation Commission. Can I have a motion to approve?
Subnote.
Okay. Was it favor?
Aye.
Aye. It was just a change from individual to LLC.
It was just up there in numbers.
Yeah.
Just changed the legal entities so that had to be re-signed.
All our instances of interest statements.
Yeah.
And then we have our public comment period. If anyone is here for public comments, we can allow out fifteen minutes for that. We have three minutes per person. And if anyone is here for public comment? No? Okay. Can move right in. Excuse me, one of our Select Board members is going to be here. He's running a little late, so I assume. Okay, we could just start with the Rocky Hill Road property complaints. I don't know if anyone is here for that. You guys are all here for that? Okay, great. And did you guys also see that the Board of Health has sent a letter out to the owner at 130 Rocky Hill Road? Just notifying them of the improvements they have to make within thirty days or else they'll make a criminal complaint against the owner? Are you aware that that letter went out? That went out, I believe, on October 28th. So it's, I don't know, says on the letter, who may concern? So I'm not quite sure. I think there were some problems figuring out who the legal owner was.
So after I met with you, I talked to the Building Inspector and the Board of Health, and the Building Inspector does acknowledge that you slow off the mark responding to your complaint. There is an issue of legal ownership of the property because apparently somebody has passed away and finding the next kin and doing that paperwork. But that doesn't involve the property owner from responsibility to address health issues. So the Building Inspector is going to be working on this board health issue and order which is enforceable in court. So.
So that's what we've done right now.
Just a follow-up. I'm wondering, may I, what are some details out of the letter that's included in all the comments that have been submitted? On behalf of the Board of Health?
Yeah, I'm not sure. This is from the Board of Health, so it's structural elements and elimination of rubbish in uncovered container, collection of sickened registered vehicles, including a boat, rubbish storage and collection, container open and uncovered, creating environment for collection of water, and maintenance of area with accumulation of rubbish in uncovered container. Yeah, they've been the same thing. Two trees that are uprooted and uprooted trees creating hazard for possible injury. I could give you a copy of this, too. Sure? Would you guys like, so you have a copy? I have a.
How do they see Steve Wallace? Would we be one of the persons that's of air? Because he's living over there.
And that is the family who pretty much own property?
How does it own property? And this is her son, Steve Wallace, and he's still living over there. I know she has a daughter who is currently in Florida, and her name is also Steve Wallace. But I don't know whether there's another character because there was a son that died, but then they robbied. And he had a wife and a daughter. And so I don't know whether they're also involved, and the daughter may be in there. But the person that's living over there is Steve Wallace.
It might be in probate court.
Right. I mean, that's not under our purview to go and look into probate court.
This is, I was just gonna say, this is the best we can do right now is issuing these things, and that would go to the legal review and be handled by the Building Inspector and the Board of Health. You know, would be on our direct Select Board.
Well, the Board of Health are elected officials, so it's under their purview in this bylaw, whereas the Building Inspector is the person that carries forward the laws and things like that of that nature. He's a court enforcement official. So he's directed by the Select Board and the Planning Board and the Board of Health to address these matters. So they're the ones that are covering this right now will be in the hands of the Board of Health.
Can I let that reset to the estate?
Steve Wallace, she is the owner. She's the woman who has.
I think that would be with the Board of Health.
The Board of Health is represented for this concern. So my question is, you know, help record for instance handling the state attorney.
Right. But that's not under our purview either. Because I saw them leave the health together, and my assumption is that they were. Days after Pat had died, that I saw them. So I'm sure they're trying to get the safe settle. So a letter went to the estate. Whoever they hired their lawyer should be able to tug at the rules of the house.
Yeah, I guess that's not under our purview. And I just like, you know, to the Board of Health, we need February 2nd at 7:00 PM. I think that's right across the hall here. I don't know if they're scheduled for that. Oh, they're downstairs now.
We attended that last week. Yeah, it's been really helpful. Yeah, it's just been twenty years since it is.
Oh wow.
Yeah.
But the cars and the vehicles have appeared in what, the last ten years or so?
Have accumulated.
They take them out, they buy one, gets in an accident, towed back to the house. Sit there, sitting there, sitting there, then buys another vehicle, gets in an accident, towed back to the house. I was told at one time that he was planning on doing this, restoring vehicles and so forth. But they have never been, they just stick there.
The one that asked us.
So beyond the current action of sending a letter in about 30 days, what would the next step be?
The Board of Health and the Horseman Officer, where maybe my progress is, I'd rather quit. He can take the back, and there's your support.
Who's the Horseman Officer?
This is the best. So we do a little bit of spec if we're on the.
That's easy. It's just a matter of time. Yeah, you can finish right now.
So with the new light law, hopefully can get some more action than what we've had in the last couple of years than in the bylaw. And that's relevant to the question in terms of the Board of Health. Putting that aside, what's the role of the Select Board in this process? Is there one? Or is our whole tonight's just bringing your attention to the facility discussion in terms of Pat, our Board, to addressing and resolving this? So you're hearing this strictly of Board of Health responsibility and the Building Inspector's.
The Building Inspector, as Horseman Officer, does report if that's the case. So we can make sure, you know, it seems pretty good.
Sure, sure.
He'll be checking in and come right day to day with the regular activity for any reason. We hope this land, they can sort of go to some say. I was just trying to bring this.
Well, we will appreciate everything that you're addressing this.
Yeah, that's what's going to be right now. Just a bit of a statement, so that doesn't get it, you know, six, seven days, nothing happens. Sure enough. Okay. I'm ideally looking for the process that there is one, and then how to ensure that is followed. And what our role is in terms of being tuned in to helping in whatever relationship form we can.
So what falls under the nuisance law? Because quite honestly, I've gone to police. And I was told the only way this could be considered a nuisance is that there was a report of noise.
That's from the police perspective.
Do what?
That's from the police perspective.
Okay, so what else is reportable as an undue nuisance law that you?
So it's a, it's a light law.
It's a light law?
Yeah. And that would cover everything from, you know, under low yards, underground yards.
Can we give you that on a copy of the law? Yes, yes. I can.
So it, that's more of an enforcement issue for the Building Inspector code versus the nuisance law, which is a lot enforcement action. And by law, it's always more than that.
I know, I know, okay, but this, although it's a subject that's been under the law, so they're trying to drag this. This is from there particularly, the police. The Building Inspector, we're really addressing this, this is slightly different, and slightly more important. And then there's some danger, there's some traffic or there's some, that needs traffic.
It's certain traffic. I think they can pull those out.
That's what we can tell you. So we'll do our best to keep an eye on it and try to keep abreast of what's going on, you know?
And of course, I think it's, it moves you to stay with Board of Health. Because they're the ones that issue the notices to them. And they will be following up on that, how to have Tim pursue this further. So it's working between the two of them.
Sure, sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll move on to our special town meeting review of the final decisions. You guys can do it.
Thank you.
You're stuck. We've got another horse.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So we have our special town meeting warrant and any final. You want to do that? Okay. Joyce wants to. So we go to.
Just a different PP letter over here. They, they, yeah, they did.
Sure, sure. Could you be, West Street, nine intersection, parking concerns? So have the police department have school transportation department raising concerns about parking your West Street 9 intersection? And the ability to serve a bus stop for a kid who did not on the reroute? So we had a complaint from a bus driver, Miss Hough, about a concern being able to serve a bus stop on West Street for a kindergarten student that had a route. And the concern is that as a result, local parker mess on West Street. And basically, you know, people are requesting that the psyche of the whole, that the park is wanting to be an intersection. Just reading this, we can put park tickets on there or maybe put signs up about park down at West Street. So I know, Mark, you're here probably from a salon perspective. You know, that's one of those things that's kind of developing. So I don't know if you have anything regarding this kind of, this bus issue has kind of brought it to that level where, you know, it's raised awareness of town where that that danger is possibly for a person. So I don't know if there's anything that you.
As soon, we acquired 97 West Street, which is directly next to Esalen half day. And I'm currently working with Haroldine and her design group and architectural insights. We've been working together the last couple of months. And we tend to be at the next meeting, the next gathering with the side review, which is a local park from Esalen, if there's any. To safely park at 97 West Street directly next to Esalen half day, which would be the issue on the common. Not observing the historic, the common, not putting a bunch of dark inside and such. So and I do apologize for the, this issue. We are actively working on it. I think that's possible people in this area to help with the situation because it's very delicate. Having my customers park in a different lot and safely walk over 2-2 half day. So as I mentioned, I do, excuse me, the list. Another question I do have is, I actually live on the common, which is, we live on West Street, my family. And I don't know where that kindergarten is. And they're a quarter of a mile from Esalen. So I do understand there's an issue with it. I think they don't have cars parked on the common at 8:00 morning or around 3:00, 3:30. The kids drop off. So I think that the issue here is relative to parking on the common generally.
Yeah, this was completely from the bus drivers. I.
I'll do a site visit.
Okay.
And then refer this back to this.
I drove through there a bunch of times. And then it's a tight to get through there. Small cars get through all the ways. We've had numerous accidents at that intersection coming off of Route 9 all the way to that on the way. And we need to put some number of signs on both sides of Route 9 that at least if the fire truck can't get down there, cruisers can't get down there, any ones can't get down there.
So the issue is a restriction issue?
Yes.
It's not the bus turn.
It's turning on the intersection. That's the problem.
So the only thing that I will question from your statement is in regards to the accidents, as far as where you were to do with our common, and they're related to the Route 9, people turning left down towards the river. So.
I have been at intersection, turning, I'm at a home station at the end of West Street. And it's totally congested and it can't get through with a.
I'm not denying that at all. I, there's accidents related to, so that's the only.
I don't know anything on our related to or not, if you want to get that technical. We need to make a decision and park signs up. All four of those are said.
So since he's working on a solution, and I.
What's the next town meeting?
Two weeks.
So we're looking at end of month early in order to have a resolution.
And then on the timing as well.
Yeah. How many people are there? Just to know how many people still.
Well, my intention is that no one are there right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know that.
I'd like to know that also the number of healths and why. How's this affecting?
121 Russell Street. Sorry, 121 S Street.
121 Russell Street. Okay, thank you.
So if.
Since I can't get through the pickup, I just imagine you're gonna ask if you don't understand the length of the fight.
I do.
No, no. They don't come around and come and go the other way. No, they have to drive down that street.
I stand for.
David, why don't you finish your sentence down there?
I was just gonna say, since we're working on it, let's give him a chance to figure out a solution so that we're not stepping on his business in there. I could just throw in, no parking signs will, like a common. And then if we decide that, you know, at the end of month or whatever, we want to prohibit parking on all the common unless there's some event going on there. And we could do that and then avoid the issue of putting no parking signs all on common. If we just did a bylaw, keep it clean, and it would not have to have parking signs at 25 feet around.
Yeah, I agree. We might want to do something on a consumer basis so that people get the picture that there's no parking, you know, in your lot there, not on common. But personally, I would rather not see no parking signs. Right, right. Yeah, yeah.
I would greatly appreciate if the Board would consider not having a vote due to the fact that it would seriously affect our destination if we have, you know, numerous employees, customers come by, and the town gets three percent of everything in all of our tenants. And I have one person that knows that that number is not on nothing. So if my business is that I did, the town is that I did, so.
Yeah, I agree.
It's about, what, three perors or whatever, from that intersection.
Three.
That's all we're talking here.
I think it's reasonable, we're, I think, here, probably. The planning board, you know, appreciation imminently.
No, the planning board too, I also know that the police have also looked, not on West Street, but they have looked at the situation on Route 9 and wanting to change the speed limit on Route 9. Because that intersection there, yes, I agree with you. It's the turn down to West Street from the traffic going to Amherst. And then you have people coming from Amherst, and all of a sudden, they want to take a turn down West Street in the midst of all the traffic right there also. So you've got them going this way and that way, and the traffic is trying to go both ways.
Yeah.
So the whole area is, I don't know what's wrong.
It's a perfect story.
It is, though. Certainly not, you know.
Yeah.
We're trying to work with you to make things right for you.
I appreciate it.
David, can we find out if this is, if that is the address that you talked about, or if there's other issues?
Yeah. I really feel the next.
I would be most concerned about the bus training from Route 9 left on West Street.
Correct. It is going.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not.
We're trying to go across.
We're trying to cross and come out of it.
It should be going at intersections with the lights.
Right. Period. Okay. Well, thank you for coming in. You know, let's work together to resolve this and see what we can do. Because we don't want to impede your businesses, so just trying to work with all of them, make everybody happy, so. And thank you.
Thank you. You have a great business there. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Town meeting tomorrow night is your candidate. Come join us. We're not working at your risk.
Okay, so we also have our, in the North Abbey Village Hall, it says RFP results, but this was more because there were some legal questions when we examined the RFP results last, was it last meeting? Two meetings ago? And so David has an update for us on that legal opinion, I believe.
All right, so the question was posed at the public forum for the special town meeting warrant as to whether we could expedite the sale, what is required for the sale to go through. So I had a long conversation with council about on it. Because we're talking about the ball field, and because it's covered by Article 97 protection, we do have to have a positive vote of the town meeting tomorrow night. We also need to have a vote of the Conservation Commission, that was something that we didn't know about before. So had the Conservation Commission also needs to vote on this. So tonight, in order to get this ball rolling, and it's gonna take a little while for this whole process to play out, and when I say a while, thinking months, not weeks, that we should take a vote tonight to forward this to, assuming a positive result of tomorrow night's vote on Article 97, forward this to the Conservation Commission and authorize forwarding this to our legislative delegation for their action. And that's a vote you can take tonight to shave a little bit of time off of it.
So move.
Second for discussion. Did they, they said we can't sell it with the Article 97 protection on there despite what the initial opinion was?
I approached town council and just said I was very, very confused because we'd heard this, we'd heard that, and so we spent quite a bit of time walking through the process.
Who said he?
That would be Sharon Everett, who was at Land Law, and Joel Bard.
And the original opinion came from?
The original opinion was that we couldn't sell it.
Yes.
From Joel Bard, and then Joel Bard said that, well, other towns do it.
So this was within the same term?
Yeah.
That we had complained?
Yeah, or maybe it was my misunderstanding of what's being said.
And who, you, you had someone take into it also.
Yeah, Tom Reed.
Tom Reed, who said it couldn't be sold. And then that's where, that's where we were tied score 2-4-2 against. We really need a ruling in writing.
If we were to try to sell it with the protection still in place, who is the deciding authority that would say yes or no at the time of closing?
It'd be the town. We could go to court.
Yeah.
I mean, what was the case in Westfield? That was the big one that this kind of brought this all up, right? And it was Westfield versus the state of Massachusetts or something like that? I forget what the case was.
Yeah, it was Westfield.
I forget what the case was, though. But that was the kind of one we were looking at for this.
Yeah, I'm not sure how the enforcement of this would occur.
Okay.
Mr. Veronimus wants to have the property and wants to have that property without any kind of question of, as to ownership or use.
Mr. Veronimus, can I, you talked about putting it in possibly 61B. You know, if this were to go through, if we removed Article 97 protection. Can you, I guess, reassure the people watching at home that that is intended to keep that open space that way town meeting forward tomorrow night when this question comes up? So we can, you know.
Definitely. Anybody, you really, really do have proposals.
Okay, okay.
If you had had that, that would, would, I just thought it would be a lot easier if you already had that.
Right, right. It would be easier.
Did that come from your terms using 61B? Because that's general ever. Or are they applying it? Is this a question? I'm not sure that this applies.
Way around would be to put a restriction on it. For him to put a conservation restriction on it.
So you'd be up into some sort of conservation restrictions, some sort of preservation?
It's from the outset, it's never been my intention to do anything with the field over there, use it for grass park.
I just want to be able to answer the questions I know are gonna come up tomorrow night.
Right.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Veronimus, I think that if I may speak for the Board, that we're willing to work with you to make this deal happen. Just seems that there's a legal process that's gonna take a while to unfold. And if you have any questions, feel free to get in touch with me, and we can talk about that.
The Board is gonna try to move it along as quickly as possible.
Right, which is why I recommend taking the vote tonight.
Yeah, conditions.
Okay, Jane?
So the buzz from the seniors is that someone deeded this land to the towns, and the town is now trying to overcome a gift. Just putting that out there for you.
We did, that was a turf of field. That was a gift.
So. So, so let's vote on this, but I have two other issues to bring up. So, all those in favor of the recommendation to petition the legislature for Article 97 if it passes tomorrow?
And send it to Conservation Commission.
As well.
So we already did.
Oh, all those in, we didn't vote. All those in favor? Aye. And then two other things I have is.
John?
No.
No, okay. Two other things I have is, what are, this process is going to take a while, so do we have money in our budget to keep the building for the winter?
No.
So we're going to find that from somewhere?
No, it's magic.
To, if, what are we doing if this doesn't pass tomorrow? Are we talking about that right now? That's the other thing.
I think the.
And we could vote right now. That might put some pressure on the meeting.
Well, we've already voted that if we didn't get rid of it by the end of the year, that we'd tear it down. And so as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's the remaining option here because we've, we've exhausted all the possible options. We've, we're going to ask the townspeople tomorrow to let us fix the building and put it to a new use with Mr. Veronimus.
Unless either the two gentlemen that bid on it want to change their proposal.
Yeah, but then we're going to be doing this for years.
We're not doing it anymore.
Yeah.
This is it. We're done. We're absolutely done. After 15 years, done.
The building and a little piece of property was all of us for sale to begin with.
Right.
And they kept bidding on them with the field.
Yes.
After they knew that the field was not available.
Well, we were trying to make it available for them, and this seems like a very nice solution to keep everybody happy. So we're already taking a vote?
Okay, that's where we are. We don't need to take a vote, but there's our concerns. Yeah, we did take a vote.
We already took a vote.
Yeah, we had a non-biding referendum that supported it and a unanimous, I believe unanimous vote, right? Did you vote for it? No, no, no. Okay, four to one vote. Tear it down by the end of the year.
Yeah. I mean, what are we going to do? Yeah. Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
Appreciate your follow-up. So after tomorrow night, if the towns does not agree with the Article 97, the building's coming down?
I mean, that's basically where we're at right now because we don't have a use for it otherwise with that restriction on that parcel, it seems.
Okay.
I mean, unless, yeah, I mean, that's kind of where we're at right now.
And that's a two-thirds vote?
Two-thirds of that Article 97?
Yes, it is a two-thirds majority vote. Not, I won't go into the technicalities, but that was something that we explored at length.
Right.
So two-thirds majority vote.
Yeah, I was hoping it wouldn't come to that, but I don't know.
So in, you know, another option, is there a way that we can explore who is the enforcement arm and get a, get an opinion from somebody at the state level to say, hey, this is what we're trying to do? We've got conflicting information from attorneys in the same firm, from Tom Reed.
Why don't you do that?
And the other thing, too, is, is there, can we keep half of it in Article 97 and half of it in a conservation restriction so that, you know, we can do that type of thing on it?
That would be a separate town meeting.
But that would be a separate town meeting vote and we'd keep going on this unless somebody wants to propose that on the floor tomorrow. We redo it.
Well, but they would have to propose it before a vote's taken.
Yeah, so.
Can I ask a question about that, please?
Yep.
Was that land given to the town or was it taken by eminent domain?
It was a gift.
Gift.
It was.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm trying to remember.
That's, that's what everybody, that's what it appeared in the deed.
I thought it was eminent domain, what I saw.
There might be two, I'm trying to remember. I surveyed the property and it comes to mind that I saw somewhere where part of it may have been taken by eminent domain. And I'm, I'm not sure what. If it was, it was probably the piece that was closest to the church, but I'm not positive of that either. I'll do a little digging and see if I can't come up with an answer because that sounds to me, based on what I'm hearing, that that may make a difference, whether it was a gift or whether it was taken. If it was a gift, it sounds like it's locked into 97, but it doesn't, there's nothing that said anything about if it was taken by eminent domain.
There was, there was a town meeting vote back in 1917. And I'll try to look that one up because that was, it was framed just, whoever was around in 1917 and what they were doing, this was framed exactly in such a way as to trigger the Article 97 protection.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll look and see if I can't find anything and I'll let you know before tomorrow night if I have any valuable information.
We'll be seeing you.
Yeah.
Well, you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So let's just do fees for building electrical and sealer of waste and measures permits and inspections. So we have fee change recommendations from the building inspector's office for all those various inspection fees.
One thousand.
And basically this is just to cover some costs associated with providing the inspection services and keeping in line with local rates. So DeeDee, I don't know if you have something specific to add or say with that?
So, I mean, basically, too, the reason behind, you know, why we need to do this is, you know, going forward, we're looking into the online permitting, which, and we do need a new permit program. Ours is just very outdated and it's just the people that keep it going are not very reliable. And mostly all the towns now are starting to do the online permits. So of course that is going to probably be a little more costly than it has been in the past. Not only that, with Tim retiring, you know, it's whether he, you know, we have just another commissioner come on, it's been spoken about combining maybe with another town, too, and things like that. And so the commissioners are very hard to come by now because a good majority of them are retiring. And so, you know, we're trying to stay in with, like, all the other towns where, you know, they're standing right now. So for the electrical, I had gone over with the electrical inspectors and everything, and they're finding that they have to be going out on more inspections for just one project sometimes than they used to have to. And we looked over with some other towns to see what their prices were, and so we thought we needed to make some adjustments as far as on the electrical part. Plumbing is the same, but the plumbing in, of course, goes with the Board of Health. He, so we will work on those with the Board of Health. As far as the building, I took it with three of the, three small towns. Actually, Southampton is, has about 1,000 more people in population than we do. But then there's the other two, but they're all consistent with the same price and they're on the permitting program, too. And, you know, we get a lot of contractors and they're all telling us that our fees are drastically much lower than a lot of other towns. And so Tim and I, you know, we went over everything and we decided that it might be just easier for us to kind of stay inconsistent with what the other towns are doing. Me being on both sides of, with the building personally and then working for the town, you know, I know the contractors, when they are coming up with their prices for customers, no matter where they're working, they sometimes just come up with a fee saying it's just, you know, dump fee and permit fee, or that they're charging a customer. So the customers never really know, and some of them are probably already overcharged as it is. So anyways, we want, we like to kind of go towards what the other towns are doing. And so what I did is I did a sheet of just, just to give you guys an idea of some of the permits I put through this year and what we got for the fee. And then if we use the new fees, that will, you know, that will be what we're going to make, which is, you know, for instance, just those fees is seven, $7,000. So, you know, that's the way. Exactly. And right now, Tom Quillen, Tim's alternate, he's been doing the three or fours and one tens for Tim because we're just so bombarded this past year with, with all the businesses coming in. And so, yeah, so then we're, we actually are paying somebody else to go out and do it. So.
So thank you for all the, you put a lot of work into it, so it's nice to have all this data in front of us, too. But I think, you know, it's fair and equitable. It's not like we're trying to gouge people by any means.
Right.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah.
So make a motion.
And the three or four and one ten?
Yes.
If we were to raise it to 100 and first or second consecutive inspections, if they needed one or two more, why wouldn't we want to put a price tag on that, on a bigger construction project?
And actually, and I think on the bottom of one of the, the new fee, it.
Yeah, there's a reinspection.
Yeah, there is a $75 to re-inspect.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that's for each inspection. Is that covered a three or four and a one ten or is that just for the initial buildings?
So if they need multiple visits to do the same inspection of the area?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, basically, the only time for the regular building inspections, we never have gone back except if we catch somebody, which I patrol around a lot and I know who I give permits to and who I don't, or haven't gotten one. So I do make sure that they get doubled the fee. And a majority of the contractors, they, that have done this, they know better. So, but sometimes it is hard to, when they're going out and for Tim to kind of keep track of it all. That's why this way with the new online permitting, it's also mobile on his phone. And so he can, right then there, say, you weren't, you didn't show up for this, or I have to come back out, and we can put the fee right back in there at that point.
The additional.
The additional, yes. But the other towns are already charging 100 for the building and 100 for the fire for the annual inspections. And so we feel that we need to bring them up with that, too.
So motion to accept the recommendations that DeeDee presented this evening?
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
And if we were looking to start it like January?
June one?
Yeah, yeah. Because once we get the permitting program, we want the fees set already, so, because they have to put it into that program, you know, to make it online.
Yeah. No, thank you very detailed. Shows all your, you know, background information and everything, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll be in December 31st to get all my permits.
Oh, and let's just keep hoping that it gets better.
Yeah.
Soon.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One more thing, maybe we have a, thinking about another in-house, where's the matter? If somebody's capable of getting the license and whatever they need to do it. We've had them kind of pass for a long time.
Don't you want regionalization, John? You're always talking about regionalization.
I, I do.
This is a regionalized service and you want to bring it in-house.
I do, but, but the amount that we have in town, is it really feasible?
Yeah, I think it would be who, who, where, what department would have the extra resources to do it?
It's just, some will look into.
Yeah.
I think you should always look at how we're delivering a service.
Yeah. No, I.
And I don't know, I don't know.
I voted to go into it until they started doubling the prices.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. So we have a human resources director appointment tonight, excited to announce. I don't know if one of you from the committee wants to introduce Mr. O'Connor?
All right. So we had a committee that was Chief Mason, Joyce, myself, Linda, and Joan from the treasurer's office. And so we had 33, 34, I think it was, applications for the position, and we whittled it down to one. Mr. Edward O'Connor is our recommendation for the human resources director position for the town, and he'll be coming to us from Worcester. And he's currently the veteran service officer for the city of Worcester and army officer, veteran, all of the above, well-educated and experienced. So I don't know if you want to say anything, but.
No, I just, I appreciate the appointment. I applied because my children live only 20 minutes away, and so the toll for Worcester to them has been a little more taxing than I thought it would have been, so I'm very excited to be closer to my kids again. And I'm originally a personnelist. The HR, the veteran services thing, just kind of, I fell into it on accident, I guess. It sounded interesting and I really enjoyed it, but I'm really glad to get back to my roots in HR and I think it's a very exciting opportunity, so.
Can you just explain to them what your HR background is? Not just.
Oh, sure.
Not just that you're a veterans agent. I mean, we appreciate that.
So I had managed HR for a variety of military organizations. I've had medical, logistics, military police, transportation. The federal government's unionized, so even when I was a federal government civilian, still managing HR, you know, dealing, the only thing I really haven't been too involved in is the collective bargaining process, but I'm very familiar with collective bargaining agreements and making sure people get their breaks and lunches on time. So I can bring a lot of that to the town, also some modernization, human resources systems, you know, maybe some comp analysis is, I've really kind of had the breadth of it, you know, unemployment claims and, you know, maybe perhaps an accident, equal opportunity, and also, lost my train of thought. But, yeah, I've kind of been a little bit of everywhere and I think I can bring that to the town and I think it'll serve you well.
Great. And when do you think you can start?
I have a contract for, yeah, second of December is, is on there.
Is on there, okay.
You know, barring approval, I'll inform my employer tomorrow.
Great. Great. So you have a motion to appoint?
I'll make a motion to appoint Edward O'Connor. Thank you very much.
You have no idea how exciting I am setting this motion. Long time coming, so.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
And you get to do the template, so.
I actually have contact information for you. I happened to be meeting with a human resource person from Southampton. And she found out that you were getting hired and she said that there's actually a group of HR professionals from municipalities that she works with, and she was hoping that you would join immediately.
And okay, she's here now? I don't want to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we haven't met before, but Ed?
Jennifer James, nice to meet you.
Okay. Why don't we, you guys good for special town meeting? Are we?
We're good.
Okay, so let's do special town meeting review and final decisions. One over there, one over here.
Did you make Joyce mad?
You just wait.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, so do we have any recommendations from the finance committee on anything tonight? Or did you attend?
So let's, let's talk about the big picture a little bit. We have, we had an annual town meeting where we passed the balance budget. On the interim between May and November, we added to that budget by funding some of the transitions in three departments where we had people moving on and getting new people in. We were able to redeploy some savings in debt and because of our AAA bond rating, reorganization DPW, and a number of other costs that we incurred. We intended to fix that at the fall town meeting using free cash and certified enterprise reserves. At this point, we do not have free cash and certified. We do not have enterprise fund reserves certified. So I've reoriented the budget in order to accomplish all the things that we said that we would be spending money on at the annual town meeting, plus taking care of the issues that have arisen in the meantime. that have arisen in the meantime. And I think we've done this in such a way that in the big picture, we can go from now on to annual town meeting and pass the budget with no need to return and fix it using certified free cash and enterprise reserves. So, going from essentially the town doing two budgets per year, springtime, falltime, to just one budget per year and freeing up the organization to capacity to work on other issues that we have plenty of, you know, plenty of work to attend to. So, I think that's the big picture, where we are. So, we funded everything. Judicious drawdown on reserves with the express intention that when we do have our free cash certified, that we replenish those reserves. And that we have had to make one small adjustment in the capital plan, the server for the, for Hadley Media's got to be deferred for a few months. Other than that, we can afford the whole thing.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Do we, do we want to vote on Articles One and Two then, our recommendation? Is there any reason?
In that case, so David, did you have the finance committee or somebody has double-checked just to make sure everything fits and all that good stuff?
Yeah, so we, when it became increasingly clear to me that we were not going to have certified free cash, I did go to the finance committee on October twenty-ninth and had them review the whole plan. They endorsed the alternative budget. I also presented this information to the financial management team on October thirtieth. They're not a voting body, but they asked some questions and made some adjustments. The assessors, the treasurer and I have gone over these numbers many times in order to make sure that they will work.
They add up. I mean, literally, I just meant, like, mechanically.
Oh, yeah.
Because you've had to change them so many times, you know.
Yeah, look at these blood shows.
We were here very late last night, I can attest to that.
Okay.
So, significant changes that I can point to very quickly is Article Four, we're going to have to pass over because of the transfer of free cash, we don't have it. Article Five, the capital article, we can do everything except for the server for Hadley Media, and we'll just defer that to the, to the springtime, and I did talk to the department about that.
That's the entire equipment line there?
Yeah, fifteen thousand. David Phil and I worked on the conservation restriction on Article Seven, we have that as a handout.
It's been finalized with our lawyers, Kestrel's good with it, our subcommittee is good with it, so we should be all set.
Great.
Article Seven will be on page thirty. And the rest of the articles.
Basically the same.
All the same.
Yeah, what happened with the health insurance funding?
We're going to have to take that out of stabilization. I was hoping to be able to squeeze, raise an appropriate by twenty-five thousand dollars, and it simply won't work. So, again, we're obligated to do this, we will take it out of stabilization, we commit to replenishing stabilization.
That's what it says there.
So, we're making a virtue out of necessity here.
Okay, do we want to vote on Articles One and Two? Did that answer your question there?
Yeah, I just wanted to show that, because I, the last thing we want, because we've been around long enough.
Oh, yeah.
We've been triggering numbers.
The only one I had a question on here, David, is page three, table A1. It's on page three and then it's on page four. And they're two different tables.
Yeah, so page.
Four looks more correct than three, I just.
Page three will be the article as it was posted.
Okay.
And page four is.
Yeah, I'll ask this.
It's a little bit more.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we approve Articles One and Two as reconstructed.
Second.
Does anybody want to vote them separately, or are we fine voting them together?
Together.
Together, okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's five zero zero on One and Two?
Yep.
Yeah, to that.
So, that's only, yeah, that's almost five thousand dollars off the table on the thirty-two.
Yeah, fifty-one thousand.
It's just where the money comes from, yeah.
Yeah, just the money sources.
Just all.
It's just a drop in the bucket.
Yeah.
Well, that's nothing, I mean, annual, you were usually fighting your thirty thousand worth.
So, that's all we had to vote on, with those two.
Yeah, I think we voted on everything else.
We did.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else regarding the special town meeting?
Article Five, each motion is going to be voted on individually, correct?
So, each motion will be voted on individually. In order to speed this up, we have a handout with the entire motion printed out, so each motion that you will be reading, Brandon, will be referring to the handout.
Yeah. And I don't know, this one, if we just want you to read the motions and us vote on it, as opposed to me getting up, describing each one, and then sitting down and having you list the motion, how we want to handle that?
What page are you on?
Eleven.
All right, so, we all know that if people are depending on their handouts, that's going to take longer for them to look at it and understand. I think if we do this the way that it always is done, you can just stand right next to me.
Okay.
Don't go sit back down.
Okay.
And we just go through it. I think it's, it's better to explain it.
Yeah, okay.
And I think I'm going to tag Tim with Christian.
Okay, fine with me.
The three musketeers there.
It's going to be fun. Again, whatever it takes.
Absolutely.
So, just some comments, that when we get our free cash, we have to think about that as a two-year installment of free cash, because we won't get much the next year, so we've got to make it do, do double duty. We have to be a little bit careful about spending in the future, and the name of the game is going to be increasing revenues. Anything that we can do to increase revenues is going to help us through the transition of FY twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two.
Do we want to reset our policy for a year, that we keep our free cash at a hundred fifty thousand or something like that as a cushion, since we are going to have to keep that for a two-year time period rather than the seventy-five that we've been working on, or do you want to just leave it, or?
Can I have a little bit of time to work on that? But, yes, I think absolutely we need to revisit that free cash policy.
Okay, anything else?
Do we know who town council will be tomorrow evening?
David Jenkins.
And is he from, he's from KP Law?
KP Law.
Okay, and are we having any distinguished guests that we are aware of?
Dan Carrier.
Scheduled, scheduled distinguished guests?
I don't want anybody scheduled.
Okay, so if.
Is Barry Roberts going to be there to speak on?
Excuse me. So, regarding Article Seventeen, I believe it's appropriate for Mr. Reedy to speak to the issue. I got an email from him this afternoon, and he wondered if he and Barry Roberts could speak, and I told him I would prefer he speak, and if anybody had any questions for Mr. Roberts. So, what I intend to do is get approval from town meeting to allow Mr. Reedy to speak and Mr. Roberts to be able to answer questions if appropriate.
Sounds good.
As a point of information, Mr. Reedy is classified as a special municipal employee by the town of Hadley. I think that may only apply when he's actually representing the town of Hadley.
I was just saying, if he's representing a private party.
Yeah.
We're going to treat him as just a non, non-registered.
Like in the regular guest.
Guest, whatever, yes, okay.
Jane had a question, real quick on that.
For distinguished guests, would you please introduce our new director?
I was going to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Christian is going to do his state of the town, so he'll have you come.
Has the school superintendent reached out to you about an address to the town prior to the capital article, Article Five?
Oh, right.
No.
All right.
I think they, my discussion with them was they didn't want to bring that up right now.
They didn't want to bring it up.
I guess.
Oh, really?
As far as I know, unless I hear otherwise, it was going to be more, I haven't heard, I guess. If it's, I guess it's up to the school committee, and I haven't heard.
Okay.
Yeah. That's where it was left at.
Maybe it should remain.
Mm-hmm. Good.
I think so. Are we going to, we're going to meet before the meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, we posted at six.
Six here?
We'll be meeting at six o'clock.
Do we need to, we just did it all?
Here, you don't have to come to us.
Well, I'm here before you are any day, so. Got you beat by a long shot.
Just don't be late for town meeting time.
I got you beat by a long shot.
Do you have, do you need anything from us that we haven't given you at this point?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right.
We'll see what happens when I wake up at four o'clock tomorrow and start thinking about it, I'll.
Exactly.
Usually about six o'clock in here, that's when the heat starts coming on, and what if this happens, what if that happens?
Yep. No, I think I've got everything that I need.
Yeah.
We'll see what happens.
Great.
All right.
Put your town meeting clothes on and come along.
There you go.
Yep. All right, so, next item is liquor license change administrative charges. And this was Jennifer, you wanted to, you suggested we do one, do a fee associated with processing changes to existing liquor licenses, such as change of manager, change of corporate ownership, et cetera.
Yes.
That's basically the gist of it?
That's the gist of it. Y'all had asked to see sort of what other towns were doing. I sent out a request to all the licensing coordinators in the state. Not everybody responded, but it is incredibly busy time of year for us. I also had conversations with Amherst and Northampton, because they are the closest towns to us. Northampton's only charges twenty-five dollars, and she said, are you kidding me? I'm charging more. She's taking it to her licensing commission, but I showed her. Amherst is doing, as you know, a major reorganization of their government, and sort of after speaking to their new licensing coordinator, he has said that he is taking it to have theirs increased as well. It's sort of a split, I found, either they don't, people don't charge, or it's a hundred dollars. Was sort of my sort of takeaway. And a hundred dollars is what I was asking, I wanted to ask y'all to consider increasing. The amount of hours I spend on processing the change is significant. Also, David and Chief Mason both also typically review changes, especially for managers and things like that. So, there's a lot of people touching these, reviewing them, and then there's the actual just processing of the paperwork for a total of about four hours. So, that's where I sort of came up with the, the amount, and it turns out that it's on par truly with other people.
Yeah.
And these are mostly corporate chains that are changing managers on a routine basis, right? Like the Whole Foods and the, you know.
We had some, Texas Roadhouse. One do two license changes in the past, like, two months, right?
And that was, and that's sort of, that's what sort of did this, is, because I spent hours, not even the four hours, I spent hours on the phone with Texas Roadhouse because their documentation wasn't right, and that was when, you know, the ABCC gets their two hundred dollars for the change, but we're, you know, I'm just doing this and peddling, you know, trying to get them to respond to things, and it, and it's not recouping any of my time and so your cost for the town.
Yeah, but typically, you don't see the small mom and pops, the local businesses doing changes during the year, just the renewals, right?
You know, Liquor Forty-Four did a change of manager, but he literally changed to his manager, who's been his long-term manager. I don't foresee that changing PENS, which again, they're semi-local. But, yeah, it's the big, big businesses, Chipotle, Texas Roadhouse, Applebee's, the big guys are the ones who change constantly.
What are they doing business?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a great idea to me, and, you know, I think we should do it, so.
Motion to approve the recommendations from our licensing coordinator?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, that's great. Looks like other towns are looking for some feedback on what we do as well, so.
Oh, I left them on there so you could see how many people are like, wait.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we're, triple A rating, why not?
In the process of change.
Yeah.
I put that on there, I thought, David, you had asked about that when we did the bottle and brew. They're actually thinking about charging a whole year's fee for the transfer, and that might be something to readdress in the future.
Yeah, at some point, or at least we got to start with one of them.
Yep.
All right, executive session minutes review, my computer allows. Yeah, there is a list here of executive session minutes to approve. It goes from March eighth, two thousand seventeen, through September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. I don't know if we want to go through this list individually, I don't know if everybody's gotten a chance to review it.
Let me just summarize it, it's, these are executive sessions, the issue is either open or closed, if it's litigation. If it's contract negotiations, the issue is either open or closed, and the rest are personnel issues, which are always closed. Or, I should say it this way, it's more, it's always a situation where you can't release those executive sessions. So, litigation, that's closed, we can release, contract negotiations that are closed, we can release, and everything else has to be withheld.
I thought we voted to do this like once a year, that was the only point I was trying to make.
The law requires that we do it twice a year, and we've been, as you can see, we're behind it.
I mean, once a year, you know?
Yeah, we're supposed to do it twice.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the list as recommended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have senior center, library and fire substation updates. Joyce, would you like to go first, the fire substation?
Sure. Fine with me. So, we met yesterday, we have, we had our little after groundbreaking, because we've already done quite a fair amount of things up there already. We've completed the under-slab utilities, completed the slab-on-grade, we've started the rough framing, we've got the pipes going underground there for the heat in the, in the garage bay area. We actually have a binder, of course, has been put on this week already, so that's all set for this year, until permanent paving next year.
They are going to wait till spring?
They are going to, they just did the basic one right now, binder.
That's what you want.
Yeah, so they did do that. Financial update looks great, we're on track, we're not over budget, and we have a contingency of six hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars remain in balance after approved and pending issues. So, we're, we're on track, and we're very much happy with the work that's been done with everybody so far. Carl's excavating has done a great job for us, and we're very happy with them.
Thanks. Okay.
Library?
Want to do the library?
Yes, library, site work, you can see, is continuing, the same types of things going on, you know, putting in conduits under, under the roof and all of that. I think main focus really has been, and from a financial standpoint, I think everybody got the, the updated report, but from a financial standpoint. I think everybody got the, the updated report, but from a financial standpoint, everything is steady as you go, we haven't had any change orders, at least not yet. And focus of the discussions right now are on interior work, you know, getting, getting to work on that, and making some final decisions relative to that. And, oh, then fundraising, so fundraising, there's a lot of emphasis on that, and as Christian had mentioned last time, we talked about it, there's been a big push to try to find a way to get the solar panels done, so there has been some movement with private individuals coming forward, so there's. That's where a lot of money is going in right now, seeing if we get some outside dollars into the project.
They're a couple of weeks behind, but they're trying to catch up, and hopefully they're going to get the base coat down around the foundation of the salt.
Looks like it's, what they're talking about is a few days before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Are they doing the, the library and the senior center at the same time, paving?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
I, I didn't ask either one of them, but they said they're both prepared to get the basin. All piping's in, I think they said they're going to try for, for this week or first of next year.
Next week, yeah.
And Jane, the senior center, do you want to give an update to the construction, and then we have a change order, I can mention that, so.
Well, construction continues, things, you don't see a lot of changes now because it's all inside with ductwork and piping and wiring and everything, but it's moving along on schedule, everybody's really excited to see a building that looks like a building. We're all very happy.
Great, and then we have one change order here. We talked about this briefly, I believe, last week, but it's for these barn doors. It's for two thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, it's change, proposed change order number seventeen. And it is to put in these barn doors to access the HVAC and other utility equipment that are in the attic of one part of the building. There's, you know, it's an attic, so there's no real easy way to get mechanical equipment in and out of there, but with these barn doors, you can open it up and get access to that equipment in the need, it needs servicing or replacement, pull it out and put it back in. Originally in the design, it was a, a plug, let's say, for lack of a better word, that would have to be removed by a larger piece of equipment, now it's just these doors that open and close, and would be sealed most of the time.
Well, so the plug thought was, you're going to be putting a piece of equipment in or out anyway, and so you're going to have the larger equipment there that could take this door off. But the contractor pointed out that it really, there were going to be times when you wanted to have it closed when you weren't finished working up there through that access, and making it hinged as opposed to one piece removable. Well, it's a better solution.
Is it insulated and?
Oh, yes.
All that? Because, you know, plugs usually easier to insulate than a metal door, that's.
Yeah, actually Gary, Gary was the one that caught this a couple of months ago.
Gary.
Yeah.
It's access into the attic?
The attic is where all the equipment is.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be necessarily insulated, does it? Particularly attics, I mean, the, the walls of the house up in the attic are not insulated, so I don't think it's a big deal if it is or not, unless they're trying to protect the.
Some type of minimum weatherproofing, I mean, I'm sure they have something.
Yeah, I don't know, if there's like a on, sketch or anything on there. Yeah. Yeah, so, I don't know, want to make a motion to approve PCO seventeen?
Simple.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's all we have for that. And town administrative report, David.
Okay. All right, so our IT grant, that this project is substantially complete, and on Friday morning, I'm going to scan all the documents for the special time meeting, and to that, it might plunge into that pool.
Oh, wow.
Can we get Hadley Media there? I'm just going to back into.
I was going to call the New York Times. Uh, just. Just running through this very quickly, so the affordable housing study grant, we are actually going to have a meeting tomorrow midday in order to review the draft report that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has put together in order to address strategies for enhancing affordable housing in the town of Hadley. So that project is moving along very nicely. The IT upgrade, I met with the school department IT director, Mr. David Olson. And Jennifer was at, was at meeting, and we talked about the possibility of sharing services, so we will develop a proposal and present that as part of the FY twenty twenty-one budget process. Our municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, we had to push the community work session back to December tenth because of, the vendor wasn't ready, but I don't think we can delay this one any further, so, but that'll happen on December tenth, and we'll get the, the word out to all the departments and stakeholders on that. Capital asset study is nearly complete. The DLT solar grant, we're working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission again in order to develop a municipal guidebook containing, containing best management practices relating to large-scale solar developments. And that work is progressing in an orderly way on. Friday last, we had a meeting with Senator Comerford, Representative Carey, and Representative Blay, and about ninety other municipal officials from Western Massachusetts to talk about infrastructure, sewer water, stormwater. And in particular, the Greenfield anaerobic digester was featured in that forum. Had a chance to talk to Marla Warner, who was the main presenter on that issue. And he and I are going to get together and talk about Hadley's future involvement with that project. Stormwater permit MS four, we are looking to PVPC to continue working on the next regional implementation grant application in order to get us through the next year of this, this requirement. Route nine widening, we just got an update from SDOT that they will submit the seventy-five percent complete plans for the reconstruction of Route nine from Middle Street to South Maple Street. New project manager has been assigned, Mr. Reardon. The next steps are environmental permitting, right-of-way acquisitions, and final cost estimate development, so that project is moving forward, and it'll be a big project. Mass Works grant, bad news, we applied for two hundred thousand dollars for West Street Common Roadways, we did not receive that grant. There were ninety-two applications totaling two hundred and twenty-three million dollars, so we were up against some pretty stiff competition. This is a grant that we're eligible to apply for once every three years. So my recommendation is rather than try to reapply for this particular project, that we start focusing on using that grant, next grant application on the Route nine widening project and all the infrastructure with that. We're going to need a lot of expert help on that one because that's major application. Electronic permitting, did you refer to it briefly, we've taken a look at three vendors. We're planning on doing, for an integrated permitting process that would bring all the departments together that issued permits and be able to coordinate this. Right now, we have a weekly meeting Tuesdays at one o'clock in order to coordinate, this can be done with technology and software. We have tentatively a site visit scheduled for Williams Town on November fifteenth. And we'll come back with a recommendation as to which of these software platforms. FY twenty twenty revenues for the first quarter are meeting our expectations. And our expenses are also trending very closely with our expectations, so it looks good for the first three months of the year. Financial management team had a meeting on the thirtieth, they reviewed the accounting services, alternative funding strategies for special time meetings. They were going to look at the FY twenty twenty-one projected revenues, and they were going to look at exploring better models for assessing administrative charges to the enterprise funds, they had a lot on their plate, they only got through half their agenda, so they'll be rescheduling to address some of the other issues. The audit, we're going to have to wait until we get that free cash certified in order for us to move forward on that. Special time meeting, we just had that discussion. Human Resources Director, we had that discussion. Accounting. We know that Bay State Municipal Accounting Group is going to be closing in December. We'll be meeting with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission next week in order to talk about going into their regional accounting service in order to make sure that we have continuity with accounting there. There are other options that are on the table, and we'll continue exploring those. Tomorrow, special time meeting, come to the special time meeting and make your voice then vote count. November thirteenth, we'll have the tax classification hearing. November fifteenth, we'll submit the tax rates to the Department of Revenue. November twenty-third, Hadley Mothers Club will have their holiday fair. November thirtieth, there's a Hadley Celebration of Lights. Are there any questions?
We forgot turkey today for Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
First turkey day is everything.
I didn't advertise Halloween either, so.
No, this is true.
That was too controversial, but you're.
Any announcements?
I do have a few, I think, tonight, or not. Anyway, I wanted to do a congratulatory to Liam Higgins. He graduated from the Call Volunteer Firefighter Recruit Training Program in Springfield last week, they had a ceremony, he did receive a congratulatory from Dan Carey also. And what's nice about it is he's staying here in Hadley right now, and he's going to be a part of our call force, so congratulations to Liam, and good luck, and please stay with us for a while. I unfortunately have a few passings this past month. And which is sad, it goes from the, one of our elders to a younger person, and our condolences to all the families, one is to Lakodia Dukovich's family, we are sincerely sorry on her passing. Walter Hoffman, he was lieutenant in the Amherst Fire Department for a number of years. Henry Malik, has lived in town his whole life, and then sad that David Chimer has passed away, and very sorry to all, everyone's families and friends from the select board.
Great, thank you.
Got one question.
Any other announcements?
The Shetree Committee is having their Town Arbor Day event November sixteenth on the Common, by the bike path is where the event's going to be, Smoky the Bear will be there, some other activities, and they're planting the first of their trees on the town tree belt.
Where'd you get the outfit?
I, I'm not wearing the outfit, trust me. So the state, someone from the state is coming.
Oh, really? Nice.
Watermelon Halloween?
I, I believe next Wednesday we'll make a proclamation in regard to the Hadley Tree Planting Day as well, but good to get that word out, you know, over a week in advance instead of three days in advance.
That's just a proclamation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else? All set, okay, we were supposed to have executive session tonight, that is not happening tonight, so we are going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you all tomorrow.
See you all tomorrow.